Okay.
Okay, we will now open the city council meeting and if you'll please join me in the flag to be allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We get roll call.
Uh, Councilor Dunsmear?
Here.
Councilor Gates?
Here.
Councilor Hughes?
Here.
Councilor Lickie?
Here.
Councilor Stobel?
Here.
Councilor Tendus?
Here.
Mayor Drinkwine?
Here. Thank you very much. Uh, we are at the first citizen and community group comment. So I will start off with Brent Dodger in the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councilors, and thank you for your service. Uh, my name is Brent Dodger. I'm on the Estacada Chamber of Commerce and we just like to show up every once in a while and burn some of your time. No, not really. Actually, just to report, um, on the partnership, I want to thank you for the partnership that you have with the Chamber of Commerce, both financially and support. And we were saddened to hear that, um, Matt was leaving, but because he's been a great partner with the Chamber of Commerce. So we are a hundred and thirty members strong and we're in this process now of renewing for our next year and already begun that process. We've been promoting local business here. There's a shop small emphasis, but we try to promote every year to have people shopping this time of year, obviously, to promote local shopping. Another thing we've been working on, um, is, as you know, there's been a number of films that have used the Estacada area and so we're trying to get in that market a little bit more. And again, I've worked with Matt in that as well, creating an Oregon film marker that goes on a trail. So those looking to film, uh, have Estacada in mind when they're looking for different places. We've been working closely with the Sandy Chamber of Commerce and Mount Hood Territory. All of those were not just to promote our local businesses, but also for the tourism piece. So to remind you, we promote all our local businesses as well as try to develop, um, Estacada more and more to seize tourism attention. And so we keep working on that and I keep encouraging you to make sure you're looking at Estacada with that light on. Uh, we developed an Estacada field guide that's been distributed, not just around Estacada, but around the county, uh, uh, working closely with Travel Oregon and Mount Hood Territory. And so the last thing I would just say, as I encourage you as our city leaders, to make sure you're looking at Estacada as a visitor, know when we invite somebody into our home, we make sure things are looking good. And so I want to make sure that you're aware that as we encourage people to come to Estacada to do the things that are attractive here, whether that's the river or stopping in on Point downtown, how it looks when they get into town is very important. So I know you're going to be going through a transition with, uh, our wonderful city manager transitioning out and somebody coming in. But I want to encourage you to keep, um, making sure staff is working hard to create a beautiful entrance in Estacada. It's a great investment into the sign. Just that center median and those side medians, I'm hoping this spring, when we start getting people back out here to Estacada, that looks good. So thank you again for your partnership. We appreciate working with you. Thank you.
The next person I have is Erin Smith.
Brought Jenny Strickland up with me as well. We have a prepared statement. So bear with me as I read from this paper. We are here today as two members of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, speaking on behalf of ourselves and not necessarily representing the committee as a whole. Upon seeing that the code that created our committee was going to be discussed, we wanted to make sure that we voiced our support for the wording that was chosen when this committee was established in March of this year. Oftentimes, people get caught up in the buzzwords they hear most associated with phrases such as historically marginalized and underrepresented. We wanted to remind you that many people in this room or their loved ones have likely been a part of marginalized or underrepresented groups at some point in their lives. Groups that have been historically marginalized include, but are in no way limited to, low-income individuals, people with physical or mental disabilities, LGBTQ people, veterans, people of color, senior citizens, people suffering from addiction, et cetera. People that have been historically marginalized haven't had the same opportunities to be represented that others have. Ensuring that these people get the representation that they deserve is important in order for true equity to exist within our town. One example of our town's efforts to promote equity last year, when the schools were shut down, was to provide public wireless hotspots to supply internet access to students whose families may not be able to afford it. Without an acknowledgement of this need, those students could have very easily been left behind while students with internet access continued their education uninterrupted. Obviously, this unequal access to education would have impact on students' grades, which would impact their ability to graduate, their future job prospects, and their ability to break the cycle of poverty. In the work that we've been doing on the DEIC so far, we've already learned so much about the communities that have been underrepresented in Estacada, and we've begun the work of making sure that they have the same access as everyone else. One example of this is our efforts to make the committee vacancy application process easier based on the opportunities for outreach and improvement that we see are available. One of the greatest things about working towards representation for historically marginalized and underrepresented communities is that the changes that are implemented often make the process easier and more accessible for all people, even those who may not consider themselves to be underrepresented. While we understand the fear of being left behind as progress happens, it is important to remember that leveling the playing field for people that haven't been a part of the process doesn't make anything more difficult for anybody else. It just helps everyone start on equal footing. This council seems to be interested in the voice of the people and we're trying to make sure that all of those voices are heard at an equal volume. If any of you have questions or concerns about the work that the DEIC is doing, please feel free to attend one of our meetings or reach out to us directly and we can let you know what tools we need to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, I have Brandy Lickie.
Hi, everybody. Um, I'm gonna pull up my sheets. Normally, I would speak to you as myself. Today, I'm coming to you as the president of a nonprofit in our town. I'm the president of Estacada Community Watch and I have my board's blessing in speaking today. The law requires us to be open and transparent to a point and we have always been and will continue to be as open as this law requires. As that stands, it is clear we have been above board and do everything required by the law of us as a nonprofit by vol. C three corporation. So when Councilor Dunsmear is contacting other nonprofits we have a good working relationship with about us, we want to know what the motivation is. Is Councilor Dunsmear contacting those other nonprofits in official capacities? And if so, what is the city's interest in this matter? If not, what is Councilor Dunsmear's personal interest in this matter? We are a group of volunteers working to do good things in our community and find it hard to believe that someone of your position would be putting stumbling blocks in our way. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, I have Kathy Fernstead.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kathy Fernstead and I'm here as a voter in our town. I'm sure you all know by now, I have filed a recall for Councilor Dunsmear. I wanted to give my reason for this filing and also inform you that I have already been able to get fifteen percent of the required signatures within four days. This has nothing to do with Councilor Dunsmear personally. On multiple occasions, Councilor Dunsmear has shown to place her personal agenda above the citizens of Estacada, failing to recuse herself when she has stated or shown she has a personal interest. She has also, on numerous occasions, stated people do not need to be involved in the decision making, nor does she need their input. It has been observed many times that she makes motions out of order and decisions without taking the time to do proper due diligence. She has also, on many occasions over the pandemic, used her platform for her personal agenda on pushing personal controversial issues as well as disrespectful statements towards the platform for her personal agenda. Councilor Dunsmear has also expressed her deep disappointment in the Red Fox deal being stopped despite the majority interest of the people against it. Councilor Dunsmear has also been observed online, making derogatory and disrespectful statements towards other councilors, the mayor, and community organizations. These kinds of behaviors do not make a good representation of the people and show she is not fit to be a city assistant. Thank you.
All right, seeing as that's all I have in front of me, we're gonna move on, uh, to the consent agenda. Oh, do I have to? Oh, okay, I didn't know that. Sorry.
Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you, council members and the mayor. Um, just a brief statement. I just wanted to say that, uh, I support Councilor Dunsmear. Um, it is no secret that I have not always agreed and seen eye to eye with her on several occasions, but I think that she does do her due diligence and is one of the most organized, well-spoken, um, city councilors that I have ever heard. Um, I think that this recall effort is an absolute waste of time. I think it is nothing more than a performative political stunt. I hope that Kathy Fernstead realizes that if you make false claims, there can be legal repercussions to that. Um, and I would also wonder, is she here, um, in the capacity as a board member for ECW? It seems that, uh, ECW as a nonprofit gets quite involved in politics, um, a lot. I see a lot of them coming and talking at city council meetings and, uh, it's, it's kind of disturbing. But anyway, um, I just wanted to let Councilor Dunsmear know that she has support. I think that she follows procedure quite well and, um, you know, I think she's done a good job. Also, I would like to add, uh, I also love what Erin Smith said regarding the DEIC. Um, I think that we're having to bring up and talk about the wording in this committee again is again another waste of time. You know, let's, we can't always agree and get along and see eye to eye and we should not all think the same on the city council. There needs to be differing views. That's what makes things work. We can't all be the same and agree on everything. Otherwise, we're just, it's, it's not balanced and fair. So I would really hope that people would really think about what they're saying and doing in regards to their capacity as a nonprofit. And as regards to, um, filing recalls on somebody whose term is nearly over, um, seems like a waste of our time here and it's more than more, these meetings are like an episode of Parks and Rec.
Thirty seconds.
And it's ridiculous. So, um, thank you, everyone, for attending tonight. Thank you for speaking and I hope everyone has a very happy holiday. Good night.
Okay. Are you there, Scott?
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Thank you.
Um, first of all, um, let's see, I, I would like to thank Councilor Dunsmear on her commitment to remaining balanced, uh, while working with the people at Estacada. Um, I've not always agreed with everything Councilor Dunsmear states or offers, but I appreciate that she was always willing to look at both sides of every issue and treat us with respect due, uh, uh, to the citizens of this town. Uh, I, I find the petition to remove her disappointing, um, almost embarrassing, especially in an environment that's been highly charged politically in the past few years. Councilor Dunsmear has always provided insight that continues to remain balanced. As for asking the citizens of Estacada, please consider, uh, talking with their doctors to find the best course of action when it regards vaccinations. This is both wise and, uh, completely appropriate. Hang on, sorry about that. I, I've never found her in any regard to, uh, to violate any ethical conduct while performing her duties. Countless others who may not speak tonight but are listening and are aware of the attempts to remove her would like to communicate to her, uh, the profound respect and thankfulness for everything that she does for the city of Estacada and the people who live here. I have nothing but respect and admiration for the council regardless of our personal opinions meet on certain topics. I ask the council to use caution when considering the removal of any counselor based on personal disagreements the others may have with them. In previous city council meetings, councilors have expressed that they wish to end the division that is being experienced by our citizens. And I ask councilors to consider this plea for the unity and consider this issue. It is not mandatory for councilors to agree with each other on subjects that they feel passionately about. To expel a counselor based solely on the notion that they hold a different point, um, a, a, a different point, let's say, for like asking citizens to please consider the advice of the healthcare professionals and their doctors when deciding something as important as whether or not to take a vaccine is neither unethical nor unwise. Thank you, Councilor Dunsmear, for all you've done.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you for your, for your counsel and your time and thank you for allowing me to speak on this.
Uh, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Awesome. Hi, uh, my name is Taylor Gibson. Um, I'm a business owner in town, um, and I've been a resident for, uh, just over five years. Um, and I wanted to express my support for Katie Dunsmear. Um, I couldn't agree with the last two people who spoke more. I think that this is a colossal waste of time, energy, money. Um, Katie is incredibly well-balanced. I also have not agreed with everything she's ever said. Um, but it seems like just a complete and total political stunt. And I continuously keep thinking, how are we ever going to recruit a new city manager when the job title is becoming babysitting the city council? And I'm just, as a citizen, as a business owner, I'm so frustrated. Um, I'm disappointed, I'm embarrassed, and I just think that this madness needs to stop and we need to, what we need is for you guys to do your job, get along, figure it out, and get the job done. I don't want to hear about you guys not liking each other or not getting along or whatever, just do what's best for the most amount of people in the city. That's what we want. The people that Joel keeps saying that he's helping and he's speaking for, the people that I'm speaking to just want you guys to get along and get the job done. So this is a waste of time, a waste of energy, and a waste of money and I hope you guys will choose to stop the nonsense. And that is all. Have a great night.
Hi, my name is Strina Feldman. I'm a longtime resident of Estacada. I've been here almost twenty-eight years. I know a few of you guys on the city council. I know Joel, I know Sean, I know Katie, I know Jerry. Um, I'm one of the people that, that did the recall petition. I was, where I first started having a problem with Katie was online on Facebook, I know. And it really ticked me off when she discouraged me from going and speaking in front of the Clackamas County Commissioners on the Red Fox. When I got there and talked to them, they acted like they had no idea that, they thought Estacada was all on board to have it. So I'm really glad that I went there and spoke. She in fact, quote, told me to put away my pitchfork and my torch and not to bother to go there. So that's where it all started. It has nothing, Joel isn't involved with the recall, I am. So that's what I wanted to say. So I don't know what problems you guys have on, on the council, but that has, it's the things that she does is, and discouraging people from going and having a voice. That, everybody needs to have a voice and you shouldn't be put down for having a voice, whatever your opinion is. And so that's why I'm doing the recall. Thank you.
Hi, folks. Good, uh, good evening. My name is Kimberly Abels. Um, I'm a former city councillor, um, and as someone who worked with Councilor Dunsmear, but did not always agree, I wanted to come and show my support for her. Um, I felt when I was working with Councilor Dunsmear, her due diligence was always incredibly in-depth. She asked thought-provoking questions and she had the best of Estacada in mind. Um, I really, and I, I find it hard to believe the procedural concerns, given she was a former council president and led several meetings when Mayor Drinkwine was unavailable. Um, and I just hope that Councilor Dunsmear knows that we see her, we see her as a strong woman leader in our community and we want to uphold her. Um, and I hope that this recall really looks at the due diligence of the law and what you can recall councilors and elected officials for and we make sure that there are actual foundational concerns, um, that would meet this requirement. Um, I can't speak to the motivations of the recall committee. Um, social media being brought in is interesting, given previous conversations we've had around councillors' interactions on social media, be it Facebook or YouTube or any other kind of subculture platforms that they appear on. Um, but I hope that we can all keep the best for our community in mind, let Councilor Dunsmear finish her term and if she would choose this to go up for reelection, we can have that conversation then. But I just wanted to come and show my support and appreciation and thank her for her work on this council as a volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Shannon Stout. But, hi Shannon, I'm not sure which one, there's two of you.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Shannon Stout and I live in Estacada. We've been here for almost four years. Um, I, I would like to address the city council on the matter of attempts to change wording in the future documents created by DEIC. I do not represent the committee only myself. First, I would like to express my thankfulness that I am part of that board of the committee and I'm excited for the great things that the city will accomplish with support and oversight from many different sources. The specific words that are being scrutinized, um, are the following, to assist the city on outreach and engagement with historically marginalized and underrepresented groups and to provide oversight and opportunities for the city to have greater accountability to the community on diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives. Often, the first few thing that people think of when they hear these words, marginalized or underrepresented or diversity, equity, and inclusion is race. And race is very important, but, um, it's part of that, but it's part of wanting to have a diverse and inclusive and equal community, but race is only a small part of the whole picture. When speaking on wanting to help provide oversight on and opportunities for the city, we're also speaking on behalf of the elderly, women, disabled, LGBTQ+, the houseless people who are experiencing poverty or need access to affordable housing, clean water, um, and, and our children, just to name a few. Every great group or leader has one thing in common and that is that they ask for the council from a variety of different sources to help make the best decisions for the people they represent. And I know it can feel scary when talking about marginalized or underrepresented groups or providing, for, providing diversity and equity and inclusion, because sometimes we're taught that often when one group of people receives help, that leaves less for the other people. Diversity, equity, inclusion is not like pie. When one piece is served, there is not less. It's like a candle. You can light a thousand candles from the flame of one candle and it does not diminish the light of the first candle. It only provides light and warmth for all the people holding the candles. And that's what diversity, equity, and inclusion is and what it can bring to Estacada. The DEIC committee doesn't want to provide oversight only to help certain people. We want to bring light to the entire town.
Thirty seconds.
The words we use are extremely important and that's why we choose to use them. Thank you for taking time to listen to me.
All right. We will continue on. Um, did you want to speak on any of those now or did you want to wait? Okay. All right. Uh, we'll move on to the consent agenda. You've all had a chance to read over the consent agenda. Do I have a motion on the floor?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right, next, we're on department and committee reports. So I will start off, Jerry, with you. Do you have any reports from your commissioners, please?
Uh, yeah, um, Parks and Rec hasn't, Parks and Recs hasn't met since our last meeting, so, um, nothing to report, nothing new to report there. Um, Arts Commission meeting went, uh, went really well. They interviewed the incoming applicants. It, uh, it was a, it was an amazing process and I wish that all committees and commissions would do, um, would follow suit and do what they did. Um, it really was nice getting, uh, getting to hear what the applicants were, you know, what, what their motivations were, what they were all about. And I would strongly recommend that all, uh, committees and commissions follow suit and, you know, hold their own interview process and then make their recommendations to the mayor from that. Um, and then, uh, the DEIC meeting was, uh, um, I was a little late to the, uh, webinar, um, but, uh, the information from the webinar, everybody's gonna have access to that. Everybody's gonna have an opportunity to, um, it's DEI 101. Um, everybody's gonna have the, the opportunity to, uh, to view that webinar and I strongly recommend, I will be going and viewing it again since I did miss a portion, but, um, I strongly recommend to all city staff, all city, all commissions, all councilors to, uh, attend that and watch that webinar. It's, uh, really informative. They're moving forward with some really good work as far as the application process for, um, the next round of applicants for committees and commissions. Um, uh, they're doing an amazing job. So the, just, uh, seeing where they're at now from where they were when they started, it's a, I mean, it's night and day difference. It's a, it's a huge, huge boost and it's a, it's good for Estacada. That's all I got.
Okay. And Jerry?
Yeah, so the school board meeting met on the night, so last Thursday, and it was a pretty exciting meeting as there were a lot of members from the community that attended. And since I started attending the school board meetings, I can honestly say that was the first time I've seen community members attend, so that's cool. Um, I'll just start off and say that Estacada School District is going to be, they, they kicked it off today. They are the first in Clackamas County to start the, um, the test to stay. And that is an attempt, um, basically to reduce the unnecessary, unnecessary quarantine time that the kids have to go through. Um, they're still leaving it parents' choice, so if parents choose to have their children tested, they test negative, they go back to school instead of doing the ten-day quarantine. The next big news would be that the, the turf field, that proposal and budget passed. And the cool thing is, is that they're able to shave off some costs with, as there are a lot of members from the local community who are actually going to come out and have already volunteered to come out and help move earth. Just us being a rural community, having a lot of members with excavators and batcoats and all sorts of stuff. So that's going to really cut down a lot of cost. And the way they're using this, it's not coming out of the school budget, but they have been sort of squirreling away money from the construction excise tax. So councillor Dunsborough will speak more about that this evening. So you can learn a little bit more about what the construction excise tax is. I don't think they've used it in the past and they've kind of just been saving it up. And that's what they're using for the turf as, with that kind of a tax, you can't really use it for anything else. You can't use it for, to pay teachers or anything like that. It has to go strictly to, to the building. So it does have restrictions on where and how that money can be used. So I think they were just waiting for an opportunity and it won't come out of the regular school budget. So they are excited to get moving on that new turf. It was a very long meeting, very exciting meeting, and I just really encourage, again, as I do every council meeting when I report on the school board, to go to YouTube and watch these meetings yourself, because it's a lot to unpack and you wouldn't want to listen to me chatter on about it for 45 minutes, because that's probably how long it would take. So Estacada Schools on YouTube, you can watch it all and there's a link on the school website if you want to follow that and then you can hear all about it. So that's all I got.
I do want to clarify, I look forward to talking about the construction excise tax, but unfortunately I did have a discussion earlier today with the city manager that I have postponed my presentation that I will be giving, based on the length of today's meeting already and other certain factors. So I will not be giving a presentation on construction excise tax today.
Gotcha.
Nothing for me today.
And nothing for me? C4 hasn't met yet? Oh, Justin.
Nothing up there?
Nope, nothing for me. Thank you. It's all good. It's all good. It's all good.
Like a screen right here.
No, okay, thank you. All right, moving right along, we'll go to the Clackamas County Sheriff's Report from Chief Bandoza. Is he on the line now? How are you, sir?
Good, thank you. Thanks for having me this evening. So just a real quick recap on some statistics from last month. The call load has, I would say was normal, is consistent with historical call load. About 174 dispatched and self-initiated calls. Our response times are within reasonable levels. And we saw an increase in alarms and domestic disturbance calls. That was from the month of November and unfortunately I think that's a kind of a historical average for around the holidays, we do see a rise in domestic violence calls. There were, there were, there were a couple of burglaries that occurred, burglaries and criminal mischief, and criminal mischiefs that occurred on school property in the city of Estacada, unfortunately. Two people have been arrested by our deputies that did a good investigation on those and were able to identify the suspects and have them in custody and continuing that investigation, but it's, it's been fruitful so far. There is also, I spoke to our deputies and what they were seeing unfortunately was several calls for service or I guess reported crimes being seen on Facebook and social media instead of those being called indirectly to normal channels like non-emergency or 911. So I'll be working with, with the city and maybe do an effort on social media, just to remind people the proper way to report crimes and it helps us obviously solve those crimes and then also keep proper statistics. So that'll just be one thing that we'll address here in the future. And then I do have my, the last thing I have, I did send out some samples and this was in response to Councilman Licky's request for some information on what, what would it cost or what would it take for the city to move to 24/7 coverage for police services? What I did was I, I composed basically four samples for you to take a look at. One of the, the first sample, and I can go into in-depth on this if you like, but the first sample is the current contract and sample. That was a 2.75 position, which, which we are currently at. The next is a four FTE sample, which I would estimate, and again emphasize it's an estimation that will be at 18 months to two years from now. That includes the 0.25 increase that will occur come March and then the added FTE that has been requested from the sheriff's office. Again, 18 months to two years out, some, somewhere in that range. The third sample is moving to a six plus one FTE, as I'm calling it. And that would be six deputies and one sergeant. And then the last sample is an eight FTE, eight plus one, eight deputies plus one sergeant. To note on both of those would show an increase for the chief position to a 2.5 for the six and then a 0.5 for the eight. One thing of note that you'll see at the, at the bottom of all of those samples, there was no change in the additional police services or police support services. That is, I don't know what those numbers would be, but I would imagine it'd be roughly double what the current rate is, if you double the amount of deputies. So those would be things like dispatch detectives, records and et cetera. You can see them at the bottom. These, these figures were to give you a rough idea of what that cost would be.
And I want to just, those came out in the email today. Okay, I just want to be sure everyone saw that. Okay.
And the last, the last thing I've noted on there, those were for the current contract, which was produced in May. So those numbers have actually already changed, which I noted in that email because of the, the raise or the change in those salaries come July. So there was, there's a slight difference, but this will give you kind of a ballpark figure. My research on that shows that for 24/7 coverage, you really need about a minimum of five personnel. The, the research, research shows five to seven personnel. But the other thing that you need to take into consideration is absences for sick leave, training, vacation and anything such as that. So backfilling those positions if that's something that you chose to do. So those are always optional and then one of, of your positions is also assigned to the SRO. And if you look through that, if you look through those samples, you would see some of the other options that you would have, such as, that are not included, such as a detective, a traffic safety officer, like a patrol deputy that's on motorcycle. And then also a community service officer, which is a person that would take reports over the phone and provide information to the public.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir. Let's see if we've got any questions for you. Hold on just a second. We've got a couple. Paul, I'll hit you first and then you.
Thank you for getting this information to us. Appreciate it. I guess a question for you, given the size of Estacada, you know, we just saw numbers that we hit 5,000 and the growth of Estacada, which of these, what, what would you recommend for the size of Estacada with, with your experience?
Yeah, so that's a good question. And so looking at the, when I look at the, the calls for service and, and dispatch calls, self-initiated calls, really, a- as you would expect, things really die down in the middle of the night. And so I think that with the services that you're getting at this point, moving from essentially from three positions to four, we can spread those positions out to, to better cover, you know, the day-to-day operations. You're still going to leave a gap at night, which is, you'll be serviced by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. So you'll, you will have a response no matter what, which is obviously a benefit to the city. So I, at this point, I would honestly, I would suggest moving forward the plan for four. Maybe moving to five, knowing that, that, you know, one of those positions is an SRO, which could give you nearly 24-hour coverage. And I think that that would satisfy your need at this point. Moving beyond that five FTE, you know, you'll start seeing some of those costs rise because, you know, the supervisory positions will then start incurring some costs. The add of police services will incur some costs and I don't know that it's, it would kind of be up to you to decide if that's, if, if it's worth the cost. But I think that four to five FT is probably where you'd want to be.
Joel, go ahead.
Okay, so appreciate it, chief. I know there's probably a lot of number crunching and consideration here, so I'll take a little time and I really appreciate that. So a couple of questions for you. So we have four options here. The one you're recommending looks to be the second one, which is just, we're going to say it's $950,000. Numbers at the end, bottom there.
And I apologize, because you have a little bit low volume, but I think you're-
Here, is it better?
Yes, much better.
So the one you're referring to is the $950,000 one. Is that the one you're referring to, we should be moving to roughly?
That's the one that, that's actually the one that you're moving to and just reiterate that that number is, it'll be higher than that because there hasn't been some adjustments, but that's the one that we're already moving toward, probably about a, a two-year window. And, and if I were to make the suggestion, the, the question was, what I would suggest for the population and the call load? I think that probably maybe at five would, would probably be adequate. That would give you maybe two-day shift, two-night shift and an SRO.
So chief, with the consideration that the time it takes to train, to locate, train, hire, kind of go through the process with an officer, what would your projections you, would you consider based upon our, what you may have learned about our city recently for four to five years from now, because that's what we're really looking at now, even though it takes a year and a half to get them. When we get there and we realize we're inadequate, then we gotta, we gotta get another one approved. That's going to be another year and a half if we need to. So I think our best look is to try to consider what four or five years out from now, what we should be looking at so that we're not lagging constantly behind, but we're trying to consider, you know, looking forward and planning for that. So.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's great to, to think that way and, and plan ahead. I think that that's, that five FTE actually gives you a pretty good buffer at that point. And with five, you're also on the cusp of needing a sergeant. So I, I think it would probably suggest if you went to the five, the next position that you add would be a supervisor. And, you know, we're, we're able to, we're able to cover the calls that are coming in right now. So as we add bodies in the future, I think we'll still be able to cover those calls. What, what we would be doing is fulfilling your request of, you know, what would it take to get more coverage throughout the day? And we'll be reducing the call load off of the county deputies that are handling the calls within the city. That gives you a better response time. It gives you a, you know, a deputy that's assigned to the city and, you know, some additional services, paid services that you get from the county.
Okay, and is that the one you're referring to, it's closer to the 1.5 or 1.6 there? Is that the?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify this. So, so your recommendation is right now that we actually pretty much double the size that we have now. We're at 2.25, I think you said, and we look, we should be look closer to five is what you're saying.
Yeah, you're at 2.75 and, and I would actually just call that three, since that's changing in March. So yeah, if you were to double that, I think that, that would be adequate for the timing that it's going to take to, to really see, you know, the deputies trained and get them to the city. It's going to take several years for that to happen. As, as I mentioned at the last meeting, that, you know, all of law enforcement is kind of a, in a crunch for personnel at the moment. So finding, finding the personnel, training the personnel and getting them to the city, I think that that helps your timeline.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, chief, we thank you. You did a great job. You brought it into perspective. I think we've got a better understanding of where we need to be and we'll continue on with what we're doing right now and hopefully that'll make a difference.
Yeah, you bet. Happy to do that. And I was going to add one thing, if, if, if a decision was made on, you know, on a target of what you wanted, a, a very specific target, we can plug in these numbers and change the, the actual amounts to, you know, current today's allotments, but, you know, it's obviously changes every year. It's just to give you an idea.
Okay. I think we'll work on that. Is that something we can do Denise and we'll get that over? Okay, yeah, that's something we'll do and Denise will get with you and we'll work that out and you'll bring it back to us. So I appreciate that.
Yep, thanks, sir.
Yep, you. All right, moving right along. I am now at the city manager's report.
Yeah, so I'm going to keep it short since we have a lot to go, but just a couple of things. We have the, we have the council's considerations for the interview committee for the city manager. So we'll be sending those names on to the consultant and they'll be starting to get in contact with those people. If there happens to be someone that can't do it, I'll get back to you guys and see an alternative. But most of them, I'm, I'm pretty sure, you know, it's not a big-time commitment. So hopefully they can all do it. And then I just want to remind everyone, you don't have a meeting on December 27th. So, and that's it for me.
All right, thank you very much. And before I continue on, I'm going to need a public hearing sheet. Do I have one? Okay, people, we're going to take a quick pause. So if you want to get up, stretch a little. I just thought I said it in front of me. I'm like, oh no, I can't do it. Don't have a memory anymore. I should have a memory right now.
But if, I mean, if that's, if you want.
Don't use Apple anything. I went from using Microsoft. Yes, I called Denise that morning when I was trying to log in and having a problem. No, I, I called Sabi and, and I had the problems all within minutes. Because Sabi was like, oh, let me reach out to IT and then all of a sudden I got, she texted me, she's like, oh yeah, IT's doing something to everybody's computer today. I was like, well, it's a good thing I got this out of the way last.
Well, that's the problem I had most. Like all of a sudden I couldn't get in my computer. That's why I had Joel.
Oh.
Then I had to, you know, I had to kind of walk through the whole.
Okay, we'll get started with this meeting again, so we'll reopen the city council. And we will now open the public hearing. In the subdivision twenty twenty-one dash zero six dash S Cedar Ridge Homes. So. Are they on the monitor, or are they?
Yeah, I.
Okay, Ben, how are you doing, Ben?
I am doing great, thank you, and. Glad to be here tonight.
Right, do any members of the council wish to abstain or declare export, take contact? The council will now hear the staff report on this proposal.
Okay, thank you, city council, Ben Blessing, Clackamas County Planning, City Investigator Planning. This is the Northbrook subdivision file twenty twenty-one dot O six dash S. Hundred and eighteen lot subdivision and a large multifamily tract. As well as some open space tracks, so. With the hundred and eighteen low density residential subdivision, you're in the north city residential zoning district this time. So you're talking, you got five thousand square foot. Minimum lot sizes essentially, can't go below that. The applicant's plan set shows no lot being under five thousand square feet, so that was met. Once again, there's several open space tracks to contain creeks in the vicinity, of course, current creek in this case. Will show a a little more detail on the next slide showing kind of some pedestrian amenities they're proposing. On this subdivision, you have improvements on Deuce Road with similar to the requirements on other subdivisions to the east. And then, of course, you have the Eagle Creek Road frontage, both are county maintain, collect minor collectors. And those will be required to be upgraded. Similar to Deuce Road. So all other roadways have been proposed at forty-five feet wide, I'll go into a little detail on that. Towards the end of the presentation. And then, yeah, once again, pedestrian trail proposed within the open space track containing current creek, we'll do a little highlight of that. So there's a vicinity map. Just for reference, you have, you can see my cursor. You have prior subdivision approvals that were were recent to the east. Dugan Estates, I believe there was nine, I can't remember if it was nine or ten phases, but a lot of phases, so those are the lots to the east. That's just a close in view of the property. Looks like there was Christmas trees and just. Large parcel with accessible, typical kind of single family home and accessory structures. Vicinity, this is just to show the lot in the north city residential zoning district, and then some proximity. You can read the proximity there on your left to the high school and city hall, approximately. Now, here's the preliminary layout, so. You have, I'll show circulation on the next slot, you got pretty good circulation. You have seventy foot wide open space tract containing, or sorry, seventy foot wide buffer containing. Current creek, that's gonna protect that from development. There's also a track proposed in that, within that that seventy foot buffer, basically. And that'll be, that'll contain a a trail system, and even a, I think, a pedestrian, a pedestrian bridge over current creek. Which will connect with the some other pedestrian amendments on the the aforementioned Dugan Estates subdivision there, so there'll be some continuation of trails. This is pretty general, as far as all the lots go, you have five thousand square foot lots, more or less. And then, of course, you have the tract over here, which which you can see is the the multifamily parcel. Begin your circulation, they've shown circulation connections with properties to the south. You have Deuce and Eagle Creek, but you know, you have current creek itself, current creek, the the creek. Kind of creating a natural barrier there between these easterns, the east subdivisions, Dugan Estates, and then what's proposed here, so. No connectivity there needed, you'll have connections across. Current creek with southeast Deuce Road, and you can't see it on the circulation map, but that new southeast current creek road when it comes in. So just some notes, I just want to make some notes from the planning commission meeting. The, basically, the planning commission approves the staff recommendations, except for they. They remove from the record a connection between southeast Eagle Creek Road and southeast. Lucy Road right here, and they they basically just found that there's already a connection. Well, the issue, the 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 planning staff required a connection because the block length issue exceeding fourteen hundred, or yeah, fourteen hundred. Linear feet, I believe, but they, I think they just found that there was already a connection here, so. That was the only, that was just something to note. Okay, so, well, have, the applicant has requested, and this was after the planning commission. Meeting is they've asked for some two conditions to be revised. The 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 one that I'm sure they'll discuss today is. The condition sixteen A of the staff report, and and I'm gonna put these up. When we, when you have, you're doing this decision time, I'll put, I've made, I've tried to organize these options, so you could just take a peek at them. You know, and kind of make it clear at least, but basically. You know, the applicant's proposing a thirty-two foot wide, basically travel surface within the forty-five foot right of way, but. They have parking on two sides, which would leave their, that would leave them with not, basically not enough space for. Two ten foot travel lanes, I'll, it'll make, I'll show you on the transportation system plan on the next slide, but, and I don't know if. City engineer Kurt McLeod's still with us, but i- if so, please feel that. Speak up if if any of this is, if you need to put anything else in there, but. Basically, our T S P transportation system plan calls for. You know, a minimum of two ten foot wide travel lanes. And parking on one side of the street or the other, it's optional, but at least two ten foot wide traveling, so. The city engineers noted that there's not not necessarily. There's nothing necessarily at issue with the applicant's proposing a thirty-two foot wide. Travel surface itself, but our T S P on the next slide will show is is showing, you know, basically, if they want to be. Parking on both sides of thirty-six foot wide, thirty-six foot wide. Width, so, you know, that might be something to discuss. The other condition, the second condition that they app, applicant asked to modify was to just more accurately describe kind of a city engineer's. Recommended condition for the sewer main on Eagle Creek Road. I talked with the city engineer, and we did modify the condition to to be more clear. For the applicant. I I don't know all the exacting standards with the, the, you know, the construction of the. The sewer main on Eagle Creek Road, but the the city man, city engineer did kind of come up with some. And myself came up with an alternative. Condition of approval, so we 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 recommend you approve that, that updated condition of approval, and I. I'm not positive, but I think the applicant was fine with it as well, so those are the two conditions that are, they're asking the planning, they're sorry, the city council. To modify, so let's look at the, let's look at the roadway section, so. This is what's in the city's T S P. You have a ten foot wide travel, two ten foot wide travel lanes, and. You can have an eight foot wide parking strip on either, either both sides or one side, but. Here we have, you can see, you know, if they're gonna do parking on both sides, you're only gonna have an eight foot wide travel lane, so. This is where the applicant's asking the city council to allow for this, but but basically. That the only reason, you know, staff, staff and the city engineer looking at the T S P plan have this alignment, so. So that's the issue there. Also, at the, couple of things to mention since the planning commission, but at at the planning commission, there was. A mention of possible wetlands in the southeast corner of the site. I let the planning commission know, and I'll of course let you know that I did create or. Submit a wetland land use notification, which is required, if there's wetland or hydro soils present. To Department of State lands, they did issue a response after the the planning commission meeting. I'm not gonna go into detail there, I'm, you have it, I think it's exhibit twenty, but they did, you know, they basically there. They noted that the wetland report submitted by the applicant doesn't necessarily comply with the. D S L delineation criteria, so. To let you know, we we don't have much for wetland management in our municipal code. We have basically a standard that says has to comply with, you know, state and federal rules for wetlands, so. We have the following. Condition that's in the land use permit currently, applicant is required to obtain necessary permits from the Oregon Department. Of state lands or Army Corps of Engine and or Army Corps of Engineer demonstrating if required by set agencies. To show that development is in compliance with state wetland slash federal regulations. So that's just something to note, welcome to talk about it at all, if you wanna talk about it during the the discussion. That's great. So just kind of. Ending the presentation here, so again, some 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 general recommended conditions, local streets, forty foot. Wide right of way, thirty-two foot travel surface, only a lot of parking is on one side, that's again how we. Currently are requiring it with the conditions, curb site side tide, curb type sidewalks. Again, just some general items, fire district approval on the final design for plat review. Also, there's a fifteen wide pedestrian easement that will, between lots thirty-three and thirty-four. Just show you that quickly here, that's this section right here, thirty-three and thirty-four. Connecting the 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 new local road to the pedestrian amenity there across Sailing Creek, so. That also is is good for block length, and you'll have a pedestrian crossing there, so. That's a condition of approval. Again, similar to the other. Approvals, a technical report required prior to any groundwork. We have maximum number of multifamily units shall be based on the final plat design, that's kind of, that'll be done at building permit review. Again, no development within seventy feet of current creek, and. There's a, there's a TriMet bus stop on there, so basically our standards require kind of compliance and. Coordination with TriMet, and if there's something needed there, that'll be a condition of approval there in the, for the frontage on Eagle Creek. Okay, so again, the options, hi, there's five of them today, so. I'll just go over them quickly, you have the 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 usual deny the application with findings that one or more of the approval criteria are unable to be met. To approve as recommended in the planning commission recommend. Recommendation report, which is basically just what you have in front of you. Approve as recommended by the planning commission and amend a condition sixteen A for the thirty-two foot wide travel surface as requested. And condition sixteen D by rewording the sanitary sewer line as the applicant requested, and staff and city engineer have. Done, basically, or option four is approve either or, maybe one of them you will, one of you will not, or. You know, you'll you'll just state that when it comes time to make the decision, and then finally, as always, if there's something else that is gonna be changed by the city council. In tonight's meeting or modified, that's always an option too, something that you don't have necessarily in front of you right now, or that comes up. That's an option two, so. There's just your noticing slide. You can just see who we noticed. And city council decision tonight, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, and Joe, we'll get to a question here in a minute, this is where that section. All right, thank you, sir, I appreciate that, so now I'm going to read, is there any correspondence regarding the application?
Um, I did, I, nothing received other than what you have in front of you, nothing else, yeah.
All right, I will now read a statement about evidence presented at the hearing. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised prior to the close of the record at the final eventuary hearing. On the specific application, such issue shall be raised with sufficient specificity so as to afford Luba. And the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the parties are inadequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing in person or by letter, or a failure to provide sufficient specificity, that's, sorry, guys. Specificity to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Luba on that issue. Would the applicant please come to the microphone to make any comments concerning the application, please state your full name before beginning.
Dave Reicher with all county surveyors and planners, Andy. Long time no see, thank you for coming back.
All right, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Ben, thank you for your presentation, with me also is Ray Moore, also from all county. Planners, licensed engineer, licensed surveyor of his project, Scott Clayton is also with us. Developer of the project, and Jessica Ehar with Lancaster Mobley Traffic Engineering is in the virtual world there somewhere, I think. Ben, would you be able to put up the the site plan and have the the apartment layout?
Yes.
Just some reminders, I live in town here, I'm the lead designer in this project. This is one of Northbrook, I'm also the lead designer on Dugan Estates three through seven project. Immediately adjacent to the east and.
Do you want the circulation plan, Dave, it's a little better scale?
Pretty colors better. Kind of point, lean or pointer. Aim there, got it. If that, that makes a sound, so don't do that either, okay. So, yeah, you know, I take ownership of these projects, because I'm designing something that's part of my town where I live, so I wanna do a good job. And I really like what we've done, like we talked about before with the parks, that's in Dugan three through seven immediately. Kind of be over here somewhere, is where we, maybe over there, we got a trail that's coming along, Sailing Creek, going to parks and the trailer keeps on going, so Ben mentioned the. Pedestrian bridge there through this pedestrian easement that goes immediately east of Bree Avenue. Again, this is just like the other projects we've talked about, this is already a product of a lot of collaboration with city staff, thanks again to Denise and Ben and Taylor and Kurt. All their hard work and and working with us in this, we really appreciate them, they're great to work with. So you've heard this one before, but I'm gonna reiterate some of my my thoughts on growth in 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 general for maybe some of my neighbors who haven't heard this one before. Regarding schools, I think, I believe the new homes are gonna help us pay for a bond that this. For the schools that we're gonna need to pay for anyway, and this is consistent with the superintendent's. Clear and concise and consistent message that the school district welcomes all this growth. In that a substantial portion of our permit fees go to the schools, a greater population gives the school district more access to government monies. And with an increased population, should the bond ever pass, there will be more of us to share the burden. Regarding sanitary system, there's a couple of different upgrades that are already in the works, one's a treatment plant, one's I N I. Maintenance and repair for the treatment plant, city engineers working with D E Q. Facilities plan is under review, large chunk of the the treatment plant project is gonna be funded by S T C money, which is collected at the time of building permits. These new homes are also gonna help, are also gonna pay for the treatment plant upgrades, with the S T Cs, they're gonna help pay for that, that we would need to do anyway. The other side is I N I that we'd have to pay for anyway, which is the issue, as you know, of stormwater. Getting into the sanitary pipes, there's far more gallons per day that hit the plant from I N I than there will be from the new homes. So the city continues to work to fix the I N I problem, which is funded from utility bill money, the more utility bills we have, the faster we fix I N I issues. So it's counterintuitive, but actually the growth is gonna help us improve sanitary sewer system for the city. Regarding traffic, of course, traffic's gonna increase, but there's already plans in the works to make improvements nearby intersections. This is, this is noted, this is accounted for in the traffic study that's in your packet. The, with the improvements that are gonna be made, such as turn lane added at the intersection here of Deuce and Eagle Creek Road. They're improving, let's see, be down. Uh, they're improving, let's see, we down, oh, it's screening, down that way, uh. Intersection of uh, River Mill and Eagle Creek Road, there's going to be improvements to that intersection as well, with those improvements being made. Um, the transportation, the transportation system uh, is adequate. Let's see here, uh. So let's see, lots of growth happening right now, the question comes to mind, what, what's, what's the end of this, is this ever going to end, and um, the answer is yes, what's the limit to it, there's a limit. The urban growth boundary line is Deuce Road, um, in this area, that's the limit, urban growth does not happen across the boundary line. But this is on this side of the urban growth boundary, and that's where growth happens, it's not inside. The urban growth boundary, and that's where we are, but we're at that limit, it's not just going to keep going forever. Uh, let's see here, let's see, last time, uh, Ben didn't bring this up, and this wasn't as much an issue. At this, the planning commission hearing for this project, uh, so, you know, we got new access points on Deuce Road, we had a good conversation about that here. Uh, last time in the Du- Dugan three through seven uh, application, um. More access points creates a natural traffic calming effect, when you're driving down a straight road that doesn't have any intersections. Psychologically, it feels like a highway, we want Deuce Road to not feel like a highway anymore, so adding intersections actually creates a natural calming effect. So we don't want to limit the number of new intersections to Deuce for that reason, this, this meets the uh, the intersection spacing standards. Same conversation, um, uh, city manager and council, we talked about. Uh, the process of speed limit changes and how that's got to go through ODOT, ODOT actually wants to see more intersection before. They start entertaining the idea of changing the uh, the speed limit. Okay, what else? So let's see, as Ben mentioned, we're in NCR, North City Residential Zoning, uh, code says five hundred square foot minimum lots. Uh, that's what we're doing, we're following the code, we're continuing to connect to the trail and park system, as I mentioned. We're going above and beyond the code and doing that, there's nothing in the code that. Requires us to do that, we're going above and beyond in that way, as Ben mentioned, we're proposing a curb to curb width. Of a thirty-two foot wide, uh, local streets with parking on both sides, and listen, and this is not. This is exactly the same as what we proposed for Dugan three through seven and Dugan uh, one through two. What changed is the city engineer's recommendation, but it's the same thing, it's thirty-two foot curb to curb. So also in your packet is a memo from our traffic engineer, um, showing. Uh, there's like a, there's a great table in there about the number of cities that have, you know, thirty-two foot curb to curb or twenty-eight foot curb to curb. With parking on both sides and local streets, and that just works, it works fine. Um, the, 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 the cross-section requirement, I'm sorry, the standard cross-section that Ben is showing, it's not in the municipal code, just. Just to say it that way, it's in the TSP, uh, but it's, th- there's not a standard city cross-section in the municipal code. So, and thirty-two foot wide curb to curb is worked on uh, previous subdivisions, parking on both sides, again, there's a calming, a traffic calming aspect to that. Um, the wider you make your local streets, the more kind of fly through, if you will, uh, traffic can, can happen, and you don't want that in your local streets, you want. Things to slow cars down. Uh, let's see here. Let's see, we, uh, you heard Ben talk about this, uh, originally, there was a staff, uh, staff recommendation for. The street to continue through uh, here, uh, planning commission. Agrees with this layout, we showed the, the apartments here, again, we're showing the apartments, but it, it's kind of like not part of this application. This is a separate review process, how this is going to lay out as part of the building permit process, uh, so we're showing Azlan Avenue here, and then this. Apartment, a private entrance here, private entrance here, so there's not this kind of natural, uh, there's not a short circuiting. Uh, thing that can happen there through the apartment site, so. What, what, what we're asking for is just the layout, um, as it is, and um, and to not go with that original, um. Uh, staff recommendation of putting an extra road connection there. Um, so where we're headed, so this is number three, so on Ben's list of the five things, what we're asking for is for number three, I'll get to a couple more elements of that. I'm in just a second. Let's see, I'm, I'm going as quick as I can here, sorry if I'm talking too fast and hitting a lot of stuff, uh, here.
Would it be a good time to throw a few questions?
Oh, go ahead, yes.
Yeah, Joe, good.
So, um, real quick, Denise, the, the width of the street that we have down here in downtown, you know, that's really tight, what is that width? Is that eight foot lanes? Yeah, the one that we have downtown are over there. Uh, just so I can get a, a visual cor- uh, idea, because. My concern with, with really tight streets, you're right about the calming effect where it slows down, but it's less reactionary time where kids are playing in that area and they dart out in front of cars. There's less reactionary time, that's my concern there, and if it's anything, also, people but drive big trucks out here, even in residential zones. You get a big wide truck that's not parked up against that thing, you lose a lot more of that street, so that's what my concern is, and I want to get a.
It's fifty-six curb to curb, so those.
Is that before parking?
That's, that includes the parking, so I think those are eighteen feet, so that would put it down to twenty feet of the ten, two ten foot.
For the two ten foot, and I, I know that that's two ten foot on it, that could be tight for the trucks going through sometimes, so. I, I, I actually tend to agree with the, with the requirement of thirty-six foot, just because. You got to have time to react, and people use big vehicles out here, that's just the way it is, so.
Uh, personally, I like the idea of wider streets, but did you just say that we have previously approved other subdivision applications from your company? That are going to be consistent with this subdivision that you're proposing today, and we have already approved thirty foot. Our thirty-two foot streets for the other subdivisions, so if we make thirty-six feet a requirement for this particular phase of the subdivision. When you think of it as a greater whole, we're going to have inconsistencies in design standards, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, I still personally like thirty-six foot streets, but that is still, uh, does, I do take that into consideration, so thank you.
And well, Captain David does have a point there, um, about consistency, um, my, my thought is, even though we've approved before. If we identify that it's a potential risk and an issue, doesn't mean we need to keep going, because it keeps a standard. We see a problem, we should probably try to fix it, so I do see an issue there, we should try to figure out a way to, to do that. Um, because like I said, reactionary time is important, and people, people drive big trucks, and you can see it. You can see where the, um, I'll just talk a lot, you can see where the, it's already tight downtown on a ten foot lane. I'm just worried about it being really tight, and um, you know, some kid running out because the car is parked there, and they're going through, and there's just no time, because he. You're right next to the other car, so, and I, I just, you know, is, is there something we can do to, to adjust to? Consider that, uh, alternate side of the street parking, uh, parking or push it to thirty-six if we need to, I mean, that's. I, I'm open to, to ideas, but I, I do have a concern for it.
Right, so again, the, and um, well, so if I can speak to the other side of the debate first, I wanted to ask a question too, which is. So there's the table that I referenced that's in your packet, it comes from Lancaster, you know, it shows. Local street standards from several um, towns, not too dissimilar from us, also with many people that have big trucks. That are twenty-eight foot curb to curb or thirty-two foot curb to curb, so it's, it's, it's working in other places, um, also, and again, it's already been approved. Um, so. Where we, we'd have an interesting choice, uh, as designers about whether to widen the streets. Or just allow parking on one side, and if you think about, so that would be an op- that's an option for us. Is to, is to keep it with thirty-two foot curb to curb, but then say, okay, the city is disallowing. Uh, parking on one side of the road, we're only allowing parking on one side of the road, I don't think that's going to make for, um, as good of a neighborhood.
They're going to park on both sides. Way desire, um, so, sorry if I can continue my question, is that okay? So if we push it to thirty-six, if that's what the coun- the council decides, what's that going to do to your planner, how's that, what the adjustment says that makes to the planner?
That's a lot of a joke.
So, well, can you reference those, what they would be? Give, give an idea.
Okay, right, right, so there is a suggestion in the staff report, um, about putting the, the sidewalks in an easement, so essentially. We still meet the minimum lot square footage requirements per code, so then that's just less, that's just that much less land. So you have two, two foot, you have two feet less land that is, that you get to enjoy on your new property. If that makes sense.
And it fall into the easement anyways, correct? The sidewalk could fall to the easement.
Well, in the new, yeah, in the new plan it would, so then you just, it's just a difference of, it's a difference of two feet. But when you have, you know, five thousand square foot lot, two feet's a little bit more precious.
So, can I answer your question, Paul, go ahead?
Uh, a couple of questions, one, on the, on the width of the roads, um. Currently Cascadia Ridge, the, the road that runs up there, do we know how wide that one is?
I'm not, I, I don't know, I'd have to, I, I'd have to review, I don't know if Denise may know.
Okay, eh, but my thought is, that's, that's, uh. Yeah, it's, it's fairly wide, uh, but I, I notice, you know, just driving into work in the morning, people park on both sides of it, we got to stay one. One person at a time in some areas, mainly because of all the construction, uh, crews coming in in the morning. But I also note with the bigger road like that, you know, kids are playing in the street there, and, and, you know, with a wider road, um. There's more chance of, of someone getting hurt, pets out in the road, kids in the road, and the traffic's moving a lot faster. Um, so I, I, I can kind of see the argument for a smaller road there, especially if from a design standard. If it's consistent with the other subdivisions that we've proved, uh, approved as well too, um, and I would think that the. The uh, uh, Campanella would be thirty-two feet as well too, going through there as opposed to thirty-six. Because that seems like a pretty thin uh, roadway.
I don't remember off the top of my head.
A- and that's fine, um, so, so I, I would be supportive, you know, just from a, a standard, a design standard, having the thirty-two. Um, track day, I, I'm. I'm intrigued by that, having the uh, multifamily housing there, but it's, it's not this, but it's at a, another time. Is it guaranteed? I- i- is that going to happen?
So what's, well, so there's a, there's a code standard in the NCR zoning code, so you. So this is, so this coincides nicely with what the code says, and it, it, it says something like within two hundred feet. Of Eagle Creek Road, spes- e- that's specifically listed in the code, within two hundred feet of Eagle Creek Road. You cannot build detached, single-family houses, so there's a list of. Options in there, so within track day. By the municipal code standards, you're only allowed to build what's there in the code.
Okay.
So, this, I mean, so yeah, but this is, this is plan A, but no guarantees on this layout.
Right, there's no developer coming in here saying, let's build on track day at this point.
Well, he's sitting right there, but it's.
Okay.
It's plan A and it. It's probably going to happen, but that's not what you're approving specifically tonight.
They have five foot sidewalks on both sides, a foot for the curbs, um. Then they have planter strips, and then all sixty foot, okay, let me go to, uh, let me try to find the other ones.
You know what the classification is? Was it, was it right there where you were?
Pardon? It, Turn Creek drive through the suburbs, standard minor collector.
Okay. So the collectors here are.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So, um, you know, I know my neighborhood's a little older, um, my neighborhood was developed in ninety-six, I live up on Edge Hill. Um, Edge Hill is a, I believe thirty-six or thirty-two foot wide. Road with parking on one side, um, and we seem to have, uh, you know, we don't seem to have any issues with the, you know, the. Parking, you know, people parking on both sides of the street, till you get up towards, you know, closer to the cul-de-sac, where it does get wider. Um, but uh, yeah, I mean, wo- would that be a determinant, um, you know, going to parking on one side of the street?
Yeah, it's an option. So we've got the parking on one side only option, we've got, you know, widen it and widen right away, we got to widen it and put it in easements, they're all options.
Only issue that I personally take with uh, restricting parking to one side of the street is what you just mentioned. People still do it anyways, we're going to need the enforcement on it, and that's just, you know, it's, it would be really hard to have constant enforcement of. No, this is only meant to be one street or one side of the street for parking, so, um, I would almost encourage us to steer away from that. And like he was saying, neighborly relations, um, you're going to fight over those prime parking spaces, so. Yeah, I'm still very conflicted.
And then a person coming from a very small street, I have to say, our children are safe because people do slow down, and I can appreciate that, so. I'm, I'm on the uh, side of uh, parking on both sides and narrowing it down a bit. Um, for the safety of our children, and I just think that's the priority here, so that's my opinion on it, so. Anybody else?
I would uh, uh, prefer parking on both sides of the street, not one side, and. Much like what Councillor Dunsmerson said, you're going to have neighbors parking in somebody else's designated spot, or they have visitors, and then it's going to be a. What are you doing in my spot, so, um, give people their, their space, most families have two, three cars these days. Um, they're going to need the room, and people are just going to have to slow down, so.
Any, any other, so the other.
Speaker request forms anywhere? Does anybody, no, okay, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, let's see, any other questions about the staff recommendation, this is the other sort of big, big item on. Uh, Ben's number three on his final slide was to just keep the layout like it is here. Leave the room for this large open space tract, um, any questions or comments about that?
I'm supportive of that.
Okay, number three, we want number three. Um, let's see, uh, Ben had mentioned the wetlands, and there's uh, something in your packet. So, so, so the words, the words like does not comply, um, Ben mentioned that, that came up somewhere, what's. Uh, how to say this, it's, it's, it's just a long process with submittals to the state, and so what the state, the, the state reviewer said. Well, my job is to review wetlands delineations, and this is not a wetlands delineation, so I can't, I can't do my job. But at this, at this point in the game, we prepared a preliminary meta, a preliminary memo, our wetlands. A consultant found no wetlands on the site, wrote a memo to say that, submitted it to, to a DSL, DSL says, well, this is, uh, they're. They're sort of changing and requiring a delineation like for everything, so to delineate a wetlands, to say that there's no wetlands. So that's just the process, and we're going through the process, it's, and we're taking those steps, does that, does that make sense? Okay, that's the. Little bit about wetlands, um, this is another subdivision with no homeowners association, um, so the track. Um, so track C, track B, track D, those are all proposed to be uh, public, owned by the city. Um, nothing's owned by the HOA, all new tracks, lots are clearly owned and maintained either by the city or individual owners. What else do I want to say? Yeah, you know, it's just another beautiful neighborhood that creates jobs and adds much-needed housing to a lopsided inventory. And uh, anyway, so yeah, we're looking for um, uh, number three, where um, like I said, we, uh, thirty-two feet. Curb to curb, parking on both sides, no dis- no uh, connection, and um.
And we have done that on a few of these that I'm finding, so.
Right, yeah, um, yeah, and again, as someone who lives here, thank you guys for what you do in volunteer time.
Well, thank you, sir. Uh, thank you, counsel, for the questions. Alright, uh, do staff have anything else they'd like to add?
Uh, you know, I, I, I think at this time, I, I'm, you know, I'll just be here, I don't really have anything follow, any follow-up, I think that was kind of already a good. Preliminary discussion, I think that the issues are understood, so, um, I, I don't.
Alright, at this time, we will close the public hearing, and I will open up the city council meeting. And we will get the options back up on the screen if we could.
Yep.
Okay.
You go.
We have the options, and I think it was number three was the, the one that was most desired, is that?
Is it impossible to make it bigger?
Old lady eyes.
I can try, hang on, oops, sorry, I got to go back here, I can do it, hang on. How's that, is that better?
That's better, that's better.
Okay. Sorry, too many options.
Alright. So there's your options.
Alright, so I get, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion, uh, let me get, let me get back to the. Top of the screen here. Well, I, I moved to approve the subdivision. Well, I, I moved to approve the subdivision, um. Option three, um. It won't go back. Moved to approve subdivision twenty twenty-one dash zero six dash S. Uh, with option three that says approve as recommended by. PC, planning commission and amend condition sixteen A for thirty-foot wide travel surface as requested by applicant. And amend condition sixteen B, rewarding sanitary sewer line recommendation. And then what, there was another one. It was, uh, not, I think it was already crossed out on the.
Well, yeah, that one's already. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Second.
Sorry, that was a lot.
Thirty-two.
I'm gonna make sure you said thirty-four.
Second on the floor, um, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passed. Thank you gentlemen.
That was a really hard motion.
First thing, I, I found we got it. I wouldn't include that sheet with the recommendations and here if you can zoom in on our thing there. Yeah.
Can we break at nine? Uh, yeah, yeah, I think so, yeah. All right, moving along, we are going to, uh, open another public hearing. For the annexation application of twenty twenty-one dash zero two, uh, annex. So I will hand that over to Taylor.
Okay, that is me. Um, all right. Good evening, council. I'm gonna share my screen. There we go. Okay. Um, so, okay, this is, uh, application file number twenty twenty-one dash O two dash annex. And I will be presenting the planning commission's recommendation to the council. You, who will issue the final decision on the application unless it's appealed to Luba. Can everyone, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and before we start, I will just note that I have attempted to keep this brief. Um, it's a very simple application and the report, this report presentation does include all of the information. That is, um, all of the criteria that's necessary to determine whether it complies. Um, with the approval criteria. However, the staff report and the submitted application, I'm sure you noticed. Um, includes a lot more detail, which includes like their intentions for future development on the property. Um, if there are any questions about that, um, or things that were in the submittal that we don't review. Um, in this presentation, I will be happy to answer them as best I can, or you can ask the applicant. But do keep in mind that tonight's proposal and your decision doesn't actually include any of the development. So any concerns related to the future subdivision, um, of the property will, will have to be addressed. Um, at the time of that future application. Just a note upfront.
Great. So I'm gonna read through this process here and then we'll get to her presenting. Is that okay with everybody? Okay. So, uh, do any members of the council wish to, uh, abstain or declare ex parte conduct on this? No? Okay. The council will now hear the staff report on the proposal, which you have just started that process. So I'll bring this back when we explain underneath. Um, is there any correspondence regarding this application, uh, from staff? No. Okay, I will now read a statement about evidence presented at the hearing. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised prior to the close of the record at the final eventuary hearing. On the specific application, such issue shall be raised with sufficient specificity. So as to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. A failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing or in person or by letter. Or a failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford Luba. And the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Luba on that issue. Okay, so now we're at the applicant. So that would be you presenting.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I, I haven't finished the, the staff report yet.
Yeah, I was, I got ahead of myself there. I was on a roll. So let's go back. Let's go back to it. Go ahead and do it. We'll just, I've read it. So that's good.
Okay, uh, but yes, it will be brief, I promise. Um, okay. So, um, the applicant is Jared Lehman. Uh, he's also the property owner. The property we're looking at is three oh six five five southeast Lawrence Road. Um, that is also tax lot number thirty-four E twenty-one one zero one. Um, and the representative for this application is Dave Reichert with All County Surveyors, who we just heard from. Um, and the property that we're looking at is about six acres at the eastern edge of the urban growth boundary. Shown here. Uh, the UGB runs right along southeast Lawrence Road, which is labeled right here. Um, and so the proposal, and I've also called out Kern Creek Estates phases one and two, just for your reference. Here's the airport over here in the top left-hand of the screen. Um, so the proposal is just, like I said, just to bring the property into city limits. They're not proposing any development. Um, and they're also not proposing any zone change from what is designated in. The comprehensive plan map, which is the low-density R-one residential zone. The property is highlighted in red here, but the, the map actually shows it as this light yellow. Sorry if that's confusing. Um. However, any annexation application, as you're probably familiar by now. Um, does include an automatic rezoning from the county's zoning to the city's zoning. So, uh, the site that we're talking about, tax lot one oh one, it's outlined in blue here. Um, it is a rectangular lot, like I said, about six acres, um, on the west side of Lawrence Road. Uh, currently just has a single-family home, a well, septic system, partially vegetated with trees. Um, there are no protected historic areas or scenic views or any known wetlands on the property. Or endangered species, et cetera. Um, and the surrounding area is comprised mostly of unincorporated properties. To the north, east, um, and south, with the exception of, like I just said in the previous slide. Um, Kern Creek Estates phase two to its west. Um, which was obviously annexed before it was approved for subdivision. So, uh, looking at the approval criteria. It needs to comply with, um, the state, the applicable statewide planning goals. As well as our local comprehensive plan goals. Um, those, those goals that are primarily applicable to this application. Because it's a residential, it's dealing with residential land are the housing goals. So, chapter eight of our comp plan includes all of the housing-related policies and goals. It adopts, um, the, that preliminary assessment of estimated housing needs that we got. With the twenty nineteen Clackamas County Regional Housing Needs Analysis. Which found a need for all housing types in the twenty-year planning period. So, um, this proposed low-density residential zoning does indeed meet that need. Um, it will allow for single-family and manufactured homes, um, accessory dwelling units. And, uh, if they're approved by, as a conditional use, it would allow also for, um, duplexes. So all of those housing types are things that were found to be needed in our next twenty years. Um, and then the development code criteria for annexations is also listed out here. So it has to be within the UGB. Yes, it is. It has to be adjacent to city limits. Yes, it is. Um, Kern Creek Estates phase two to its west. Um, the proposed use for the site has to comply with the comp plan and map. Like I said, there's no, um, development proposed with this application. They're not requesting a zone change. Um, it is currently used as for a, you know, residential use. Um, and so it is automatically by default consistent with our adopted comp plan and map. It will automatically rezone to what's already been, um, adopted on that map. Future development, of course, will be subject to another review according to the, um, the code requirements. For subdivisions and the R-one zone. Um, and then. Oh, I have A B, A B. Um, I don't, what should be item D here. Is that adequate capacity of our urban services must exist or be able to be made available. Um, the applicant submitted a statement from the city engineer with their submittal. Um, describing in detail how the city water and sewer systems can indeed accommodate the potential development. Um, and yeah, just to note on that, this, this is something that I think has come up in. A number of, uh, annexation and subdivision conversations with both the planning commission and the council. Uh, where there's been some confusion about when do we decide, uh, whether our various systems have enough capacity. Um, and it's actually at the time of annexation. So even though this application doesn't include any development. We still need to, um, review the capacity of our water and sewer systems. Um, assuming that the property will develop with the density that's allowed in the underlying zone. So that's why that code section is there. Um, but yes, check that off the list. Uh, capacity for those does indeed exist. And then lastly, um. As I think many of you know by now, there are several outdated sections of our development code. That are probably not legal for us to apply. Um, and item C under here. And this is section, um, sixteen point one two four point oh three oh. I know it doesn't show on the screen. But, um, this section asks for us to review the availability of police, fire, parks and school services. Um, however, the fire and school districts. They have a responsibility to accommodate whatever growth happens in their boundaries. Um, and not the other way around. So the city will grow. It is required to grow. You know, if these subdivisions meet the development code criteria, all of the applicable criteria. If they meet all the code requirements, um, that property is entitled to develop. And so the districts that overlap with the city boundaries, um, they have a statutory requirement to keep up with the growth. So it doesn't really make sense for our code to, to include this review of, um, availability of these different services. That aren't under our jurisdiction, basically. Um, so that is crossed out. And I'm just being clear about why we are not including that in, uh, this review. So with that. The planning commission's recommendation is approval. Um, and it just lists out these standard conditions of approval. Um, basically specifying the area that's being included in, in the city limits. Um, directing us to conform the maps accordingly. And then the last one here, just make sure that whenever the property does develop. Um, that property owner agrees to dedicate the appropriate right-of-way according to our code and the TSP. And that's it. Any questions?
I guess I just wanted some clarification. Is this the, uh, tax lot that is gonna be having that, uh, that, that driveway? Go through it essentially to connect the Kern Creek Estates to Lawrence Road? Is that that same property that we talked about a couple of months ago?
Yeah, good question. It is not. Um, so this might be the best picture to see it.
And that's what makes me think that it is, cause if you look at the blue box inside of the bigger yellow box, there's like a space in between. Yeah, that one.
Yeah, so can you see my cursor?
Yeah.
Okay, um, maybe I just misunderstood your question. So Kern Creek Estates phase two is here. And then the flagpole of that lot is where. Uh, is where, what is it? Clayton Drive will be brought out to Lawrence Road. So that flagpole, um, is not part of the property that we're talking about annexing today. But yes, it is, it runs right along that property, if that's what you meant.
Okay, thank you. I wanted that clarification. I appreciate it.
And a very call from the application that she was referring to. I think the property line below that is, was part of that road. Would run on the one below it to make it a full-width road. But because the property wasn't, another one that became a square-looking one, that's, that's a repurchase. They said that they'd make that, that little flagpole one. Would become a full, full width road at some point if they got that one. So is that what you're, we're asking about? The flagpole road there is.
I was just trying to get better understanding of exactly which property this is.
All right, I think we got it there, Taylor. Thank you. And I've already read the statement about evidentiary presented. So that's done. Um, we will now, uh. Yeah, we, uh, speaker request forms. We don't have any of those, so we'll just bring it back. Okay, so let's hear from the applicant. Oh, you got second round, huh?
Yeah, I'm in a better mood now. Thanks again. Thanks for hearing our application. Um, I'll try to keep it short and sweet. Appreciate Taylor's, uh, work on this. Taylor, um, can you put that screen back up, that same picture you just had? Let's see here. Yeah, so this, like she said, it's R-one. So when it comes in, it's seventy-five hundred square foot, um, minimum lots. Um, we'd be looking at residential subdivision. But again, this is just for approving, um, the, um. Uh, just the annexation at this time. Um, as Taylor said, we meet all the, um, applicable criteria for the municipal code. The city's comp plan, um, and the housing needs, um, analysis. Um, yeah, just for the, the last issue. Talk about, so yeah, the, the center of this, of Clayton Drive is this property line. So the other half of Clayton Drive someday will be on. Someday perhaps. Uh, well, um, let me back up and say that a better way. We showed in our future street plan as part of this application and a part of this application. We showed future street plan, all this property, part of our engineering requirement. And we showed this being the center line of that road. Um, so there's potentially a layout where houses would front here, there's a road coming out this way. But again, that's not for this evening. Uh, same question. Is this development gonna go on forever and ever and ever? The answer is no. It's, um, what keeps that at bay is the urban growth boundary. Where's the urban growth boundary in this area? It's Lawrence Road. So properties to the east of Lawrence Road are outside UGB. Uh, the urban growth does not happen over here. These properties here are inside the UGB. This is where the urban growth, um, is supposed to happen. And so that's, um, that's what we're asking for. Any questions?
So Lawrence Road, is it within the city limits? Is it a city, is, is it a city jurisdiction road or is it a county jurisdiction? It's county jurisdiction. So is it currently included in our TSP?
Yes, but it's, it's just listed as a local street.
It's listed as a local street. And so by bringing in developments to that road. Or making multiple connections from the subdivisions into Lawrence. And is it going to become a new, uh, major collector or a minor collector of sorts?
It, it wouldn't be, it actually wouldn't be too dissimilar from Deuce. Cause Deuce is a county road. And we're creating new intersections on the county road with local city streets. And so, and now we're also headed towards a review process for engineering for Dugan one and two. And so we have to, we create a plan set that goes to the county and a plan set to get reviewed by the city and plans that gets reviewed by the. So, um, it would be the same thing there. So the county takes a look at, at Lawrence Road.
Okay, I was just curious because I've heard a lot of people express to me their, their fears about Lawrence Road being used as a, a minor collector even. Because as a local road, it's got its own, um, downfalls. And to have, uh, more people using it on a more regular basis without us having any sort of control over that road. Or any future plans to develop it to city standards. It just really does concern me, but, um, that's.
No, it's, that's understandable. And, and so, and that's what, that's what engineering standards are for. And so at that time, that's what the county would apply their engineering standards for. Um, is the road wide enough? Um, what about sight distance? You know, there's, there's. Is the road wide enough? What about site distance? You know, there's, there's, you know, is it, is the curve a blind curve? Can you see or not? And there's all sorts of engineering analysis that has to happen. But that's, we're not, we're not ignoring that issue right now. It's just, it's just not for right now. It's going to be addressed at the proper time, which is just not tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
You keep saying that when I'm addressing the issues right now, I get that, but it's things as a council, when we look forward, we have to consider all that. So I agree with Katie's comments and questions. So while you're saying it's something we're addressing right now, it is something that we're addressing right now because we just consider all that when we're annexing the property in. What maybe happened to that property at a later time, take that into consideration. And make sure that we're doing our due diligence, things done properly there as well. And also you keep talking about how the urban growth boundary has to align. The urban growth boundaries can move. So I wanted to clarify that for the people that are watching. Urban growth boundaries can move in time if the council chooses to incorporate more than the urban growth boundary. So that's, I just wanted to clarify that. That's all. But yeah, so we are trying to consider that. I think that's what, uh, council manager is asking about is, you know, those, those questions, and I think it's a, a good way to go with it. So. I, I just, I, I keep hearing you say that. I just wanted to clarify. So.
I think I, I think I might need to clarify that it would be illegal for the city to consider Lawrence Roads capacity at this point in the approval process. That's something for the subdivision application.
Thank you. All right. Does staff have anything else? Well, you've heard it tonight. Before you leave, Taylor, can you put up the, the options we have on there? So that they'll know what to read when we come back in.
Sorry, I didn't make an option slide. But I can at least.
I, I will move to approve annexation. Okay.
Okay. So we're going to go out of, back into the city council.
I move to approve annexation application number twenty twenty one dash zero two dash annex, including the four recommended staff conditions of approval. And yeah, that's my motion.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, people. Uh, yeah, I'll give you a five minutes.
They're like, we're done.
I heard everybody saying, oh, too long.
Good. So now we're at council business. We have the E O P adoption.
I'm going to introduce again Edward Colson. He's on the with us tonight, our consultant. I just let him go ahead and talk about the changes that were made in response to the, the recommendations you made to us last.
How are you, Edward?
Oh, good evening. How are you, counselors? Excellent. Well, I hope to make this quick for everyone here. We just wanted to give an update on the emergency operations plan for the city of Estacada. And the recommendations that were made at the November eighth, twenty twenty one city council meeting were implemented on the emergency operations plan. As listed in the packet there, there was a, a list of revisions that were noted and discussed that we implemented in the emergency operations plan. And I don't know if, if everybody has access to a copy or I can screen share or just kind of discuss what would be all of the updates that we added into there.
Maybe can you just go ahead and share your screen or?
Yeah. Okay. So here is our initial one on one dash thirteen for the emergency declaration process as clarified. What we wanted to make sure is that the, the declaration process has a clear and concise follow through so that the mayor would declare an emergency by resolution. And the declaration would incorporate these items listed here that would allow for the declaration. And then in addition to that, on the next city council meeting, it would be approved by the city council there. That's the initial one. We wanted to make sure that that emergency declaration process was suffice in the emergency operations plan and clear and have those emergency measures. The second thing we wanted to go over was the revised lines of succession on page one dash seventeen, which we will share here. On one dash seventeen, we switched the lines of succession based upon a discussion with the city council so that the assistant city manager is number two. We left the city manager as number one. There was discussion as to whether or not we would put the emergency management coordinator, the assistant city manager, number one. That operational tactical discussion that we had showed that the authority to be able to run emergency management operations would lie with the city manager. But responsibility and the ability to direct the emergency could go to the assistant city manager who would be trained in that and then act as incident commander. Emergency policy and governance was updated for number three and number four listed in case, you know, the mayor or the city council president was inaccessible during that time for the emergency to give governance. So we updated that city line of succession there. And then on three dash three, and I apologize for moving so fast down the line there. Okay. Three dash three. It showed us, city counselors may require assistance by asking state and elected officials as well as through the county. As was discussed at the November eighth meeting, reaching out to state and elected officials to be able to gather additional assistance, you know, alongside county resources and other mutual aid. We ensured that that is inside the emergency operations plan. We clarified the assistant city manager in three dash four, serving as the emergency management coordinator and the roles and responsibilities of that. And then lastly, there was a discussion regarding the level of incidents and the inclusion of making sure that we had the appropriate weather type of events and others that would constitute what would be a level two incident and a level three incident. And those are in four dash three. So we'll head on over to chapter four and dash three here. And we incorporated that severe winter weather would be under the level two incident. And then wildfires and evacuations within the city boundary or surrounding areas that could cause a citywide evacuation being a level three incident. And then lastly, under chapter five dash one will be the, the mayor, command and control of city departments and resources lies with the mayor. And then the city manager acting as emergency manager, doing direction and control of the city. And then delegating that authority, that tactical incident command operation to emergency management coordinator, who could be the incident commander during that particular time. So those were the, those were the revisions noted in here as from the November eighth, twenty twenty one meeting. And in addition to that, there was also a discussion regarding the ordinance for the two dash or two dot three six. And we can discuss that or we can continue chatting about the emergency operations plan here. We'll just keep going. In the chapter two dot thirty six for the emergency management, there was a discussion regarding adopting on the recommendation of the council of changing the city code by continuing to leave the purpose in there. And I don't, or I do have that pulled up here. For that, the purpose is that the responsibility for emergency planning and response lies with the civil authority here. And then we took out the definitions because the definition stated are inside the emergency operations plan. So is the succession of authority, the declaration, the regulation, control. We left the responsibility for the emergency management program to lie with the city council and ensuring that the city manager continues to keep the E O P updated. But this is kind of in line with other communities that put the majority of changes inside the emergency operations plan. And then the code authorizes the responsibility of who would be in charge of the emergency management program for the city. So those are the two pieces that we wanted to bring to city council here and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? We went through this. This is where all the changes that we asked for. So I'm very confident in the way they were proposed.
Yeah, that's right. This packet was seven hundred and fifty nine pages. I have not had adequate time to go through and read all this. I'd like to, before you vote to adopt this, consider postponing that till next, the next council meeting. So we actually kind of really read through this. Just to make sure before we fully adopt it in, because that was, this was a massive packet. There's no way I could have got through that in a week.
Well, it was a massive packet, but we talked about it last time. We pretty much, you know, said that we were going to do it in this. They wouldn't make the revision. That's what they've done. They've come here, we've got them here. So I think now we're going to have to, you know, step up and decide. I mean, I understand he didn't have enough time to really peruse it.
I just don't know if everybody did have a chance for the seven hundred and fifty nine page back in a week to read through it. So it's a lot. And I just feel like something like this, we just, we, we should be going through and that's my consideration. I'm not saying that they need to come back. We, we have a week, if there's a problem. What we find with it, but definitely to consider reading through it and make sure there's nothing that we have concerns with. As part of the due diligence, I just don't have the time to get through it myself and I don't know about anyone else. Well, it's, it's pretty much the same information that we got last time with the changes that we requested.
And they've been highlighted.
Well, the difference is also there, there's proposals to changes that are going to involve our city code and everything else. I, I just want time to weigh that out. That's all. Until like I did my due diligence before I can vote on it and be confident. That's, that's me and I don't know if it's on the, it's on that way, but there's, it's, it's a lot to take in and it's been a very large packet and in a very short period of time to read it all. So.
I'm, I'm fine with it, with, with adopting it this evening because I remember going through it last time and what we discussed.
I could speak to the code just a little bit. We could, the code, we wouldn't be adopting any changes to the actual code tonight.
Okay.
Because we'll have to bring that back as an ordinance. So the code is kind of just to show you what we recommend doing. And then if that's okay, we could, Sadie would bring that back as an ordinance that you would, you'd have to go through that process to before the code to actually be changed. So tonight we're just really asking for the emergency operations plan to be adopted. Which then is kind of a living document.
That was going to be my next question. If I thought, if we motion and we bring it in tonight and adoption and I find a serious problem with it, are we able to change it? At the, at a future meeting? Okay, then yeah, I'm not worried about that. So especially if we're not doing.
Yes, I will move to approve the emergency operations plan.
Okay, but first.
I'll second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Next time. Okay, next on my list, we're not doing the construction.
No, we're going to postpone it until sometime after the first meeting.
Okay. Reviewing the municipal code, two dash three, three dash zero, three, zero sections B and C. Joel, this is you.
Yeah. My, my changes are very simple guys. It isn't an amendment to the end of it. So as you know, I've been trying to go through the codes and bring up stuff. This one was actually brought to me as an issue. And so I reviewed it and thought there was, they have consideration on it. If you look at most of the other pieces in here, it talks about how the purpose of the, of that particular portion of advisement. So, and these particular ones, the way it worded, it directs action in there. And I just wanted to amend at the very end. Hey, let me, let me do this. This is, there you go. Is that better? Okay. So, yeah, this thing is not the best to work with. So it's just an amendment at the end of it. It says, they would say, assist the city on outreach and engagement with historically marginalized and underrepresented groups by advising the council or by advisement. And the, basically the exact same thing by advisement would be amended to the end of each one of those. Because then it takes it from a directive of an action to advisement, just like the other ones. And they're kind of advise, say the same things. And that's all that, that's all it is. It's just basically sharing up our code. So, and by directing what it's, what it is. And by adding the word by advisement at the end of it, same with the bottom one. So that's all there is. So when, when parks and recs, when parks and recs do an event like the, just using it as, as an example, the trick or trot. They didn't, they didn't come to council and ask us if they could do it. They just did it. When arts commission holds an event like the chalk walk, they didn't come to council. They didn't ask us if they could. They just did it. It's not by advisement for them. We shouldn't be holding the DEIC to the same standards. If there's an outreach program that they can, that they can do to engage the community, I'm all for it.
I just have a question, actually. I was wondering if you've done your due diligence by going to the DEIC directly with these ideas or concerns that you have regarding their committee before coming to the city council?
Considering I'm on the city council and I know I'm going to come to the city council where we make the directions here. I don't need to go to them.
But we appointed a, a committee of seven people who are fully capable of running the committee on their own, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you have concerns about their committee or the wording as it relates to their committee, maybe getting their input would be really valuable in this kind of discussion.
Well, considering that we write the code that directs that, that's what I'm referring to. I'm not referring to what they do in their committee or referring to how it's done. This was brought in as an advisory committee. And so I want to be sure that the code defines it. It's like where I've been looking at all the other codes. If there's something that doesn't shore it up, I'm advising that we look at it for showing up our code and being specific with our code. Generalizing our code is not the way it should be done. We should be having more specifics in our code. And all this is doing is adding that, that's specific of it's by advisement. It's like the other lines above and below it say, just amending it. And this was brought to me and I, I saw the concern that the person had. And so therefore I'm just bringing to the council saying, let's shore up our code like the, that the other pieces on that line say, by simply adding by advisement. This was an advisory committee, not an action committee. That's what we brought it in as.
Where do we see advisory committee? I mean, is that something that we can point to? Is that, how is this different from or consistent his recommendations with other committees?
Yeah, all of our committees are advisory committees. Advisory committees, except for maybe the planning commission. They have some quasi official responsibilities and the budget committee, but the other ones are all advisory committees. They, and yeah. So we, I guess we would need to address before any committee does a you know, event or outreach, should we have all, you know, it probably should be all or nothing. Should they come to the council for approval before they do outreach and?
So if we do it for this committee, we, we should carry forth and do it for all committees then as well too, is what.
And I'm in agreement with that. Advisory committees for advising the council, not for action. If we want an action committee, then we need to build it as an action committee, write the code to reflect that. Our code's meant to reflect advisory and all I'm trying to do is shore up our code. This happens to be one of our newest committees. So, and it was brought to me. So I looked at it. So, and.
So we then need to change the language for the other committees.
Right. Because Parks and Rec is an advisory committee, for example. The Arts Commission is an advisory committee. They're, they're, they're all advisory committees. They don't have, they don't have the power to, you know, do. You know, do major.
Do whatever. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I was always taught that the most successful part of management is learning when to delegate. And I guess as a board, I would really hate to see us getting into the business of micromanagement over seven more than capable adults who can make their own decisions about their own committee. And if they have to come to the council for blessings to sneeze every day. I would see that as an overreach of this board. And I would like to see us trusting the people that we appoint to our committees a little more than we are right now.
Well, and maybe staff could come back with some language to clarify, to be sure that it's understood that these are advisory committees. You know, we, we can certainly do that.
Well, so out of curiosity Denise, are you saying that we should have the Parks and Rec committee come to us every time that they want to plan an event?
Well, I guess we would need that direction from the, the, you know, but we could certainly look at some other wardings in other cities on, on all, not just this one. And just see if we're missing something here. And, and then maybe state have that discussion, you know, how you know, what are the areas that they can proceed without direction from the council?
And so that would include the downtown Estacada commission, the arts commission, the Parks and Recreation Commission. I mean, we have tons of commissions.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify, we're not directing how they run the committee. We're directing of the actions they take. For example, if they want to do an action outside their committee, they come to the council and say, we want to do this, this and this this year. We say, yeah, go ahead. Especially if there's any sort of resources needed from the city. There, we, we define them as a, as a advisory committee. Means that they develop and bring things forward to advise the council for the council to make a decision. It's not to be an overloading type of thing. It's just, we're responsible for what happens in the city. We're accountable to it, including those committees, what they do, we're still accountable for. We're the ones elected for the, for the, by the people to represent them. It's our job to oversee what's happening these, when they do it. Now, if we want it to be an action committee, then we develop an action committee and we write the coding set for that to be done. But when we develop it and we decide and we make the choice for them to be an advisory committee, we should be going forward in that one. Because that's what we set it up as.
I think we can beat this back and forth. But I think you, staff taking it and going out and taking a look at it, see if we're out of line or is this something that nobody's doing or?
Right, because that's not what we're doing right now. So, but we, we certainly can look at that.
Yeah, I think there would be a fair observation of what's really happening right here. Rather than saying that you're right or you're right. I, I think I just want to fall in line with the way it's done. And, and, and are we on the right page here? You know, I don't want to put anybody out. Before we do this. So I think.
I'll bring that back at the next meeting.
So my, my, my biggest concern over this is I just don't want to hinder any of these committees from doing the great work that they're already doing. I don't want to, I don't want it to be a speed bump for Parks and Rec, for Arts Commission, for DEIC, for the BEC to, I don't want to, I don't want us to be a speed bump. We appointed them for a reason. I don't want us to be a speed bump for that, for them to continue doing the great work that they're doing. That's my concern. So.
But just, you know, take a look at it, bring it back to us. At that time, I mean, we don't have to make any rash decisions or do anything. I think we want to look at this fairly all around.
Maybe when we talk about this again, I would really love to have some sort of input from members of these committees to see how they feel about coming to the council for invite, or you know, just, just giving us advice or asking us permission to have events or, or to do outreach or things like that. And I would really like to hear what some of these committee members really feel about that proposal.
Okay. And, and I, I know that the DEIC is working on some of these topics. They had a work session, but you know, I don't think it would be hard for committees. Most of the organized committees, they, they also have a goal setting at the start. They said, these are the things we want to do. And they certainly could come report to the council saying, this is what we're looking at. I, I don't think that would be a, a hard thing. So.
I'm good. I'm good. I'm with you. We don't need to keep beating this.
No, no.
We got to charge.
I think staff just looking and, and researching a little bit and bringing it back would be the best way to handle this. I think we should continue on. I appreciate you guys though. Don't, don't think I'm trying to, you know, take it to the side. It's very important. I know. So.
And it's also, that's an important thing, the liaisons.
It is. It is. I want to know. I want to know, you know, where, where, where we should be or we're doing something. But thank you. Thank you on that. And I, I think we can move on on that one. The last thing here is committee and commission appointments. So I'm going to go to that page here. And I'm going to start off with Parks and Recreation. They had, I'm seeing here three applications. Is that right Denise? And they were comfortable with all three. And that seems to be okay. So we're just going to let that one go. Is council in agreement on that?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. The Estacada Arts Commission, they had four vacancies. They're comfortable with all four applicants on theirs. Oh, do they have five now? Oh.
The four.
Okay, okay, okay. I got it. Okay. So the four they're recommending.
Okay.
We would have to pick who is serving on the longer term, correct?
The mayor.
The mayor would do it. Okay.
This is the mayor with consent of the council.
Yeah. So what exactly do I got to pick out of this? I've got. Yeah, that's what I want to do. Their recommendation. So I'm just asking for consensus with council.
Are we going to have to appoint, or is he going to have to decide who's in the longer term and who's in the shorter term?
Inside around.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so if council is okay with that.
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious who the fifth was. Was there? Okay, so they actually interviewed these. Okay.
That's what Jerry was saying earlier with the, like how they did that.
Yeah, I thought he said that. So.
Okay. And next is the Estacada Infrastructure Committee. It has two vacancies. And two applications. And I'm comfortable with both those.
I, I don't know. I really think we should discuss.
I thought about that.
She's shady.
That's right.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna ask immediately because you wouldn't be able to take, take until you're done with. Okay.
Yeah, but I don't think they're going to be meeting anytime before that. So. So if the council is comfortable with that.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Uh, and then I am at the budget committee. Yes. They have five and five, and everybody's looked at it. Really all comfortable with that. Consensus is good. Okay. The last one. We had, now that was a change on that. It was the downtown Estacada commission. It has four vacancies now, right? And the choices. Bennett Johnson was one. Scott Stout was one. And Connie Redman. Yeah. Chris and Hannah Smith. Yeah. So. I, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, are, are you okay with that? Katie?
Uh, you know how I feel about one of the applicants, but if everyone else is in agreement, then I won't take a fight on it. But.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, I'm giving my input.
Thank you. There we go. Now, I got the next citizen community group comment. I don't think anybody's even awake right now.
They must be drinking coffee or something.
Oh, okay. All right.
They fell asleep.
All right, guys. We're down at the bottom here. I've got your comments. I'm going to start off with you Jerry.
I, can I start actually? Thank you. Thank you, Jerry. I appreciate you yielding your time. All right. I am going to address a very heavy elephant in the room. On November twenty ninth, a petition was filed calling for my recall. I have a few things I would like to say. Dear Kathy Fernstead, Chief Petitioner. I have never met you by my recollection in person at a city council meeting, by phone, online, or otherwise. But it appears to me that you have been grossly misinformed as to several details that you have claimed to be factual in the petition filed. First, I want to establish that as a city counselor with three years worth of public record, I am prepared to back up with evidence, everything I'm about to say. Second. You are using language in this document out of context in order to stoke emotional reactions out of your target demographic of voters. There is no reason a city counselor cannot speak on issues of personal interest. What you are referring to in context is conflict of interest. A conflict arises when participation in an official action would or could result in a financial benefit to the public official, a relative or a business in which either are associated. And this leads to my third point. I have, in fact, recused myself when my family member's actual real business was up for discussion. The meeting minutes from January twenty eighth, twenty nineteen show that I declared ex parte before discussion and I abstained from the vote. My mom wasn't even the applicant, but her business was located under the roof being discussed and I decided to be overly cautious. A few weeks ago, a fellow counselor asked if I would recuse myself over a discussion surrounding marijuana ordinances. Sure, I have a personal interest. I live here too. And as I explained during the meeting, I have been witness to how the current ordinances are acting as barriers to an entrepreneur's experience as it relates to this industry in our city. That being said, what did not exist was a conflict of interest. It has been five years since my mom attempted to open a marijuana dispensary in Estacada. And to my knowledge, and I know my mom pretty well, she is not planning to open one, even if the ordinances change. So no, I will not recuse myself over an imaginary business that is not based in reality. Moving to number four. You know what? We could be here all day picking apart each statement in this petition, but it would take a very long time. I will close with this. Kathy. I realize that you are the treasurer of the Estacada Community Watch. But I am going to try my very best to keep your participation in that nonprofit separate from the political candidates in this city. Which is why I am taking legal action to hold you personally accountable for each and every one of the statements that you certified to be true, even when I can prove you wrong. With the majority, that is. Many of the statements that you make are in outrage to something that every counselor is allowed to do or are otherwise also guilty of. I cannot begin to fathom why a complete stranger to me would use fallacy and untruths to petition for a recall. The only motivation that I can assume is that you simply do not like hearing what I have to say. You are trying to silence opposing voices, not because of any ethical wrongdoing, but because, simply because you disagree with me. Or perhaps it is the most obvious that you and I would agree more if you took the time to actually pay attention to who I am, what I say, and what I fight for. I just want to close by saying thank you to everyone who has reached out to me in the last several days, voicing your support, encouragement, and words of wisdom. There are just too many people to name individually. Just know that from the bottom of my. There are just too many people to name individually. Just know that from the bottom of my heart, I truly appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you.
Very. Really have to follow that? Um, well, I'll, she said a lot. I'm going to make, I'm going to make this short and sweet. Uh, this recall petition is not based on any, any solid facts. Um, every single complaint in this recall, um, can be said about every councillor, including the mayor on this board. Um, minus Paul, and probably Justin, because Justin doesn't talk. Um, but, uh, every, every part of that, every part of that complaint could be said about every councillor up on this, up there, except, like I said, except for Paul and maybe Justin, maybe. Um, I want to thank staff, this, this was a big, big packet. Oh my God, that was so much. Um, thank you guys so much for that. It was a, a lot to get through. Um, made it easy, it made it as easy as possible for us, um, but, um, and I know, I don't know, is Matt already gone, or? Um, this, I, I said it before, but this city, this city is losing a big, you know, a big, a big piece. Um, Matt has done so much for this city, and I just want to make sure that, you know, he knows he's appreciated. Um, I've reached out to him personally, let him know how much I appreciate him, but, um, he's meant so much and done so much in this city. Um, he's going to be missed. Regardless of who we get, Matt is going to be missed, so. Um, thanks, everybody, for coming. Thanks, everybody who came. Um, I know it's kind of empty now, but, uh, looks like our Zoom, our, our Zoom, uh, is still, uh, running strong, so. But thank you, guys. I appreciate you, and, uh, thanks for letting me have my words.
Hey, Justin?
Hey, I just wanted to thank staff, uh, and also, uh, say that, you know, Katie and myself have, uh, butted heads and stuff, but this is absolutely ridiculous and a waste of time. Uh, Katie, I think that, uh, you're a great person. You've done amazing things, and I, I think that it's, it's sad to see this kind of hatred. I, for one, am getting tired of it. And I wish that we could all realize that it's okay that we don't have, I think it was, oh, who was saying that earlier? Um, I was going to give her a shout out, because I totally agreed with her, but I don't think she's on anymore. Uh, anyway, that we don't have to have the same thoughts, we don't have to agree on everything. It's okay that we don't, it's a good thing, and, uh, I appreciate that, so, uh, that's all I got to say. So, thanks, everybody, thanks, staff.
Hey, thank you. Paul?
I, I agree also with a lot of what, uh, Jerry and Justin have said as well, too. I think it's, it's, uh, ridiculous that the, uh, petition was filed against you, Katie. Um, I found you to be a great person to work with. And I don't agree with everyone on this board, um, and that's all right. That's what I like about this group here, is that we've got differing opinions. Um, I found you to be a very passionate person that is engaged in the success of this city, and I thank you for that. And just want to encourage people, if, if folks do have concerns, if folks do have issues with the approach of what we say or do up here, please come see us. We're all reasonable. We'd love to talk with you, reach out, email, text, phone, stop us on the streets. Um, I, I think that's a better approach and a better use of time than filing a petition to get somebody removed from an elected position here. And that's all I've got. Thank you, staff, for this, uh, packet, and happy holidays to all.
Um, yeah, I just want to first wish everybody, uh, Merry Christmas, happy holidays through the season, have a safe new year. Um, you know, I really don't have a whole lot of backstory on this whole recall or whatnot, um, so I really have a whole lot to say to it, other than I haven't seen anything just from a city council perspective that has been, you know, that you've been negligent in any way. Um, I, I, it, if, sometimes, yeah, it is kind of frustrating that we, you know, can't, that we butt heads a lot, but I do think that it is, it's cool, and it's what makes the city run well, is when we do have disagreements, and if we can peaceably discuss them and get through them, which we have, and it does happen, um, then I think that's when the, like, real magic happens, so. Um, again, I don't know, all there, seems like there's some drama and backstory, but I'm not, it's not for me to get into all that. Um, but I do want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas again. Stay safe. Thank you, city staff, for all that you do. I do have, um, you guys have done tremendous work, it was a big packet, and again, also a nice packet, uh, layout for wastewater treatment plant, that was another one, that was, I got through all of it amazingly. Um, so yeah, I think that's all I have to say on that.
Um, so, the, it comes down to this with the recall, um, when the people have the right to file what they want to file, they're, they're represented by us. Um, I don't think it has anything to do with how we interact here on the council. There's times I agree with Katie, there's times I disagree with Katie. That's how we interact as a council. I don't think their call has anything to do with that. It's sounded to be, based upon what I heard there, is how they feel they're being represented, represented. And a recall, simply, you have to get a certain amount of signatures and petitions on it, from what I understand. And the, the people speak to it. If they agree with it, they're going to sign it. If they don't, then they're not going to. I mean, it's the right of the people to call and to question anybody, anybody can have a recall on it, and if the people, the majority are going to agree with it, they're going to act on it, so let them do their thing. So, I don't think it has anything to do with how we interact up here. I don't think it has anything to do with us as a council. It's how the people feel, and I've seen some people say things, they, they, people have said things to me, they've said things to Katie, said things to all of us. In this case, they decided to take action, so. Um, so I don't think it speaks anyone else on the council for that. But, uh, yes, have a Merry Christmas. It's right around the corner. I'm looking forward to the break, and, um, yeah, that's all, thanks.
We have a lot to deal with daily. I know it affects your lives. It affects mine. I don't sleep anymore, so. It definitely takes wear and tear on you, and I'm sorry for all the things you go through in your life. But I wish all of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.